Ladies and gentlemen, we will be starting the Trenton City Council meeting momentarily. If you could please take the time to mute your devices, we'd greatly appreciate it. If you're on a dial-in, please dial star six to mute yourself and star six to unmute yourself. Likewise, during public portion, if you're on a dial-in, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and star nine to lower your hand. We thank you for your time, and we'll be starting the meeting shortly. But please remain muted throughout the meeting until such time as you may be recognized by the Trenton City Council.
Mr. Conlon, is Council President on?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Everything's ready to go. Do we have our quorum, Mr. Conlon? Mr. Conlon?
Yes, ma'am. We now have a quorum. Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Harrison have arrived. Let me just see if there's any of the council papers who have arrived.
We can still move forward.
Yes, ma'am. We do have a quorum.
All righty. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting, excuse, this meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian. I think we need to...
Yes, ma'am. That will be updated.
Posted on the first floor bulletin board in the City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's Office, and posted on the City of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. We'll call Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Colwell-Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Harrison?
Present.
Mr. Michelle? Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Good evening, sir. Ms. Vaughn? Council President McBride?
Present.
Madam quorum is formed. Would you like me to proceed to call the directors? Yes, ma'am. The clerk is present. Mr. Kalogi?
Present.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Cruz?
Present, and good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Cherry? I'm present. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Liston?
I'm present.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Bridges? Mr. Bridges? Is someone here from the Department of Law?
No, I muted you, so I can see you. I'm present.
Oh, it's all funny, because I'm using your phone, so we don't have, like, two...
Okay. Bleeding over, your phone call is bleeding over into our meeting, so please, if you can mute yourself, be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Mr. Bridges? There you are, sir. I see you, sir.
Present.
Mr. Wilson?
Are you with me?
Present.
Ladies and gentlemen, please take the time to mute your devices at this time. If you're on a dial-in, please dial star six to mute yourself and to unmute yourself, but please remain muted during this period of the meeting. Mr. Douglas?
Present. Good evening, all.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Daniels?
Present. Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Dr. Lopez?
I'm present. Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am. Mr. Anatiri?
Good evening, everybody. Present.
Good evening, sir. Ms. Richardson?
Good evening. I'm present.
Good evening, ma'am. Mr. Lavenberg? Mr. Lavenberg, sir?
Present.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Zalinski? Thought I saw him here. Mrs. Zalinski, if you'd unmute yourself? Mrs. Zalinski, are you present, sir? Okay, we'll proceed. Council President, the directors are present as noted. Would you like me to proceed to the invocation of flag salute?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, if we could plow our heads for an indication? Almighty, we ask for your protection and the wisdom of this council, and on a special petition tonight, we ask for the safety of all public servants everywhere, including council people and public servants who run for office, so that they may carry out their duties, and we pray for their wisdom, and we thank you for this petition. Amen. If we could all rise for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council President, would you like me to proceed to the docket?
Yes.
Council President, do you want me to proceed to the minutes and petitions, or would you like to go right to executive session?
I think executive session would be the best.
Yes, ma'am. Council President would like to move Resolution 21-421 to the floor. This is the resolution to go to executive session. Just bear with me. I'll bring it up. Council President, it is not necessary, this was publicly advertised, but if you want, I can read it into the record.
If it was publicly advertised, then you may move straight to the council.
This is Resolution...
President McBride?
Yes.
Will we have an opportunity to comment on this executive session?
Pardon me?
Will we have an opportunity to opine on the timing of this executive session? I just think generally we should wait until the business of the city is done and then go into executive session, and I just wanted to know if I'd have an opportunity to highlight, you know, my opposition to going into executive session at this time.
Well, so noted, councilmen, as you also know, that we are paying a whole host of attorneys by the hour based on the lawsuits that the mayor has brought against the council, and they're waiting for the executive session, and they have to be off by 7:30, so we need to move straight to the executive session, and your opposition is noted.
Resolution 21-421 authorizing the City Council of the City of Trenton to hold an executive session excludes public specifically under Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-12B7, pending our anticipated litigation or contract negotiation hearing which the public body is or may become a party, or matters falling within attorney-client privilege. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Actually, the Council President moved it to the floor. My apologies. Council President McBride has the motion. Ms. Colwell-Wilson, is that your second?
Second, yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson, second. I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
No.
Mr. Blakely votes no. Ms. Colwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Harrison votes no. Mr. Michelle? Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez votes yes. Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn, have you arrived, ma'am? Ms. Vaughn is marked absent. That's President McBride.
Okay, so go ahead and read into the minutes, and then we'll come back, and hopefully council will move on.
I'm not so sure, actually, we're done, ma'am. I do need your vote.
Oh, yes, definitely.
So you vote yes. Okay. I am going to ask law, it is, I do believe it's actually a majority of the members present, but I'm going to leave that to the Law Department to, it's my belief that the resolution has passed based upon the number of the members present. It's a simple majority of the members present. We have five members present, we have a quorum, but I'd like to ask the Council President indulgence to ask the Law Department for a ruling on this.
Yes, Mr. Kalogi, could you chime in? In the meantime, Mr....
What was the exact number of the votes, the yes and the no's?
There are three to two with two members absent.
All right, so this was a simple motion, a simple matter to move into executive session. That's the motion?
Yes, sir.
And then it passes?
Thank you, sir. We are adjourned to executive session at 5:42 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, if IT could put up a note that we are into executive session, we will be returned after executive session. Greatly appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen, we will be returning from executive session. We do expect it to be a little bit of time. We ask you to hold in there during the meeting, and we will return. Upon our return, we will resume the business of the council. Thank you. We're adjourned at 5:42 PM.
Mr. Conlon?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you try to reach out to Councilwoman to find out if she's going to take part in this meeting this evening?
Yes, ma'am. I will reach out to her right now. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you get my email earlier?
I did, and we should just, we should table them if you want. You should raise a motion to table them to a later date, and then when you want to bring them back, you just let me know. We'll land them back to the docket. I'm here.
I'm going to move to table it, so don't forget, I will, I'm going to table.
Yeah, no, I've actually, and I've noted it on my docket, so I...
But don't forget that I want indefinitely, indefinitely.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please take the time to mute yourselves during, while Council Vice Chair?
Yes.
The Council President is having a technical difficulty. She's trying to connect, but she says it just keeps saying connecting, connecting, connecting. So she actually just called me and advised that she would like us to proceed, and she will join us as soon as possible. She's going to restart her device and come on in.
Okay, so you may continue, Mr. Conlon, with the, I guess, with the consent agenda first?
We'll take the roll first to rejoin the meeting.
Oh, we didn't do that, that's right.
Yes, ma'am. So, let me start the recording. Ladies and gentlemen, we are returning to the Trenton City Council meeting after executive session, and thank you for your patience and your time. We'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson? I'll call you. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle? Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
And Council President McBride is temporarily absent, and the City Clerk is here. Mr. Kalogi?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cruz?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cherry?
I'm present. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Liston?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bridges?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bridges?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Douglas?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Daniels?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Lopez?
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Anatiri?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Douglas?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Daniels?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Lopez?
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Anatiri?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Richardson? Ms. Richardson, if, I don't know if you're here, if you unmute yourself, we'll come back to you. Mr. Lavenberg?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zalinski?
Present.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, sir. Thank you. Council Vice Chair, we have the roll called. We are returned from exec. Would you like me to proceed to the docket, ma'am?
Yes.
First on the docket, we have communications and petitions. There are 76 communications and petitions for approval by the council. In addition to the communications and petitions, we have four reports from the City Clerk, we have the City Clerk's Office, the Light 2020 Financial Report, and four other reports regarding raffles. We have pull ticket raffle application of American Legion Mitchell Davis Purse Number 182 for October 17, 2021, to benefit the American Legion Chamber Program, the American Legion Youth Program, and the Boys and Girls Club of the State of New Jersey. Second raffle is 50/50 off-premises raffle application of the Auxiliary Board of Children's Home Society for November 27, 2021, to benefit the infant care program of Children's Home Society. Next is a tricky trade raffle application of the Children's Home Society since 2030 to 2021 to benefit the programs of the Children's Home Society in New Jersey. Finally, we have an on-premises 50/50 raffle application to Children's Home Society for September 30, 2021, to benefit the programs of the Children's Home Society in New Jersey. Do I have a motion to approve the communications and petitions and reports as presented?
Some of the second?
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell-Wilson, a second by Ms. Vaughn. All in favor of approving communications, petitions, and reports?
Aye.
Aye.
All are in favor? Council Vice Chair, would you like me to proceed down the docket?
Please do.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of items number 21-426, number 21-397, number 21-400, number 21-402, number 21-403, number 21-409, number 21-425, number 21-412, number 21-419, and we did receive the legal memo with regard to that item, ma'am, so do you want that to remain in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. And the last item would be item 21-419. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it read into the record?
Some of the...
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell-Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Vaughn. I will call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Council Chair Colwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero, with two members absent. Madam, would you like me to proceed down the agenda, down the docket?
Yes, please.
First, we have Resolution 21-259, a resolution supporting bill 4656, which authorizes the creation of a local civilian review board to review police operations and conduct. The floor is open.
Yeah, I just want to say that, yeah, I would like to just say that, you know, this is an opportunity for this council to stand up around the issue of a civilian board for the Police Department. I think that this would be a really great opportunity to involve our citizenry in police possible police misconduct issues, and I know the legislature is looking at, you know, is in the throes of looking to pass a civilian board, and I hope that, you know, this council can be on the right side of history and support, you know, this very important initiative. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, yes.
Vice President? I mean, I just want to quickly ask Councilman Blakely about this board. Speaking of the legislature, it was pulled from the legislature, correct, Councilman Blakely?
Sure was.
Yeah, and the reason I was pulled is because there was one item that had helped the public concern around subpoena power of the board, right? Subpoena power, meaning that...
Yes, yes, this bill actually supports having subpoena power for the board. So there were people who were concerned about the board having subpoena power, and, you know, that's their issue, but I actually believe that without subpoena power, the civilian board would be toothless and would not have the power to actually make the difference that it needs to make.
So, there's current laws on the books, and can I just ask Mr., oh, I'm not, I have the floor. So, is Mr. Kalogi on the line, please? We were just talking about subpoenas in another meeting. Mr. Kalogi, can you tell us what the implication of a subpoena power and why it's, why certain groups have concerns about it, having that power given to these civilians?
Ms. Vaughn, I'm sorry, there's a tremendous amount of static. Could you just tell me exactly, again?
Yeah, so, 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 a part of, I'm sorry, a part of subpoena power, the issue with this bill that was introduced on the state legislature, and Councilman Blakely wants to send a message of support of, the legislature pulled it, the New Jersey State Legislature pulled it temporarily to amend it so that there could be further deliberations around the concern of granting civilian, a civilian board subpoena power, to be able to have that power to summons and individuals and get hold up, you know, non-public information about police officers and et cetera, is, can you describe the power of subpoena power, I mean, a subpoena, and having that power and the implication to a private citizen?
Yeah, sure, I can give you my understanding in the context of what happened in that matter. The City of Newark had created a civilian review board, which was going to have substantial powers to investigate matters involving police officers. It was litigated by the police unions, et cetera, and it went all the way to the Supreme Court. The way they drafted the ordinance and the appellate division upheld it was that they had subpoena power, and people didn't voluntarily comply and give them information, documents, or testimony. They could issue subpoenas, which would, which is a document that served on them, and compel them to either give testimony, documents, or information. If they failed to do so, they would be able to go to court to get a court order enforcing it, and if somebody's in abey by the court order, presumably they'd be held in contempt and could be fined or jailed. Problem is, when it got to the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court, for reasons that aren't totally clear from the opinion, ruled that it, that there wouldn't be a basis to give a civilian review board subpoena power unless the legislature changed the statutes doing it. So my understanding is there were two main issues that went before the legislature, one to give them subpoena power, and the other two... One, to give them subpoena power, and the other, to deal with the issue that the Supreme Court said they couldn't investigate at certain points when the investigation was already being undertaken by the Internal Affairs Function of the Police Department. But the, the more simple answer is, without subpoena power, they would be a toothless tiger. They would have power, but they would be unable to enforce it. If they sought documents, if they sought information, and it wasn't voluntarily provided to them, they would have no way of getting it. Consequently, they couldn't do their job. My understanding of legislation was to revise that and make it part of the law of New Jersey that civilian review boards would have that power to issue subpoenas.
I mean, somebody is making a lot of noise, and I can't, we can't hear.
Yes, they are.
Um, so, Mr. Klowdri, can you repeat that last, uh, subpoena power, um, uh, the, the disadvantage if the board, you, 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 you're talking about the advantage and, uh, if the board didn't have, uh, subpoena power, then it wouldn't have any teeth. And then we kind of got?
Exactly right. It would be kind of a useless effort. You know, they could have the power to investigate, but if they can't, uh, be backed by some legal force to, uh, allow them to investigate. In other words, they write a letter, they say, we want all these records. Somebody ignores the letter. If they don't have subpoena power, they can't do anything further. They can't compel it, force it. So that was the whole issue of giving these bodies subpoena power so they could actually get the materials they need to conduct their investigations. And the Supreme Court said that at this point, when they got the case and the law they didn't have it, the legislature would have to give it to them. And that's my understanding of the bill that, uh, Mr. Blakely asked for the resolution initially to support, that that bill was going to give them subpoena power and was also going to modify their investigatory function in the context of not conflicting with internal affairs investigation functions. Uh, I, you knew that the bill was pulled. No one had communicated that to me. So you're, you're much more up to date on that issue than I am.
Yeah, the, the bill was pulled because of that. So, um, Mr. Blakely, are you concerned with the fact that potentially the board can conflict with the Police Department's internal affairs?
No, I am not. And I'll just say that it was pulled because, there's a lot of feedback. There's a lot of feedback.
Everybody dialing their phones.
Okay, so, this was pulled because, and I'm actually a supporter, well, I'm not even going to go into that. What I would say is this, the bill was pulled because police unions are generally against, uh, civilian review boards. That's why it was pulled. Uh, the Legislative Black Caucus, which represents, you know, communities like Trenton, uh, have been supportive of, uh, this bill. And, you know, it was pulled based on, uh, political considerations and the pressure of police unions. And so, you know, quite frankly, a, a broad array of social justice organizations, including the Institute for Social Justice, the NWA CP, and a litany of other progressive organizations have, and the Legis, Legislative Black Caucus have spoken affirmatively about, uh, this bill. They support it. They think it's a good thing. Now, if you want to stand, uh, with the police unions, that's your business. You can do what you want. Um, but I'm just telling you that, uh, you know, this is an opportunity for this council to be on the right side of an issue and convey to the state legislature that we believe, uh, that civilian complaints should, uh, not go down, um, you know, the, 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 the kind of, um, should not go down a path where they're not adjudicated through the existing, uh, uh, existing, uh, procedures. And that's why, you know, so many good people of good faith have been supportive of civilian boards. And, you know, quite frankly, um, it has to be, without subpoena power, they're toothless. Without subpoena power, they don't have the proper powers to investigate potential police misconduct. And, you know, I think that our people are fair. I think that our citizens are fair. And that we should provide an opportunity, um, to, uh, to highlight, you know, for a fairer system that the people have confidence in. Quite frankly, my constituency, the people that I represent, uh, a lot of young African Americans, folks of my age bracket, don't have much confidence in the traditional, uh, uh, process for determining police misconduct. And that's why we believe, uh, that this bill would provide a fairer and more equitable, uh, manner of, um, determining police misconduct. And that's why, you know, we're supporting this bill. And I want to thank our revolution of Trenton, Jersey, of Mercer County, for supporting this bill. Um, they have been stalwart champions of, of this bill, as well, as I mentioned, a, uh, a, a great constellation of progressive organizations and, and, you know, folks, uh, like, uh, the Reverend Charles Boyer of, uh, of, uh, the, uh, who just became the pastor of, um, the AME Church, um, in Trenton. So, I just wanted to say that. I really appreciate Mr. Boyer and the Institute for Social Justice and other organizations who have made their opinions known on this issue. And as I mentioned, you know, the opposition to this bill is largely police unions who, you know, like things the way they are. And, uh, you know, I certainly do not. And that's why I'm supporting this bill, or this, uh, this bill. And I hope my colleagues support it as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing this to the table. And I raised the question not to oppose you, Councilman Blakely, okay? So I raised it because I don't think many people understood some of the, uh, the, uh, concern about the bill, why it was pulled. And as Mr. Klowdri just stated, he didn't even know that it was pulled on the state legislature. So, um, and I will say this to our council and all the, and to the public that's in our meeting this evening, is that I'm absolutely for, uh, 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 a, a, a public review board, a civilian review board. Um, and I'm, I, I, certainly, I'm for a board that has all the proper resources, uh, for them to be effective. And I think something like this goes a long way to police department reform and criminal justice reform. So I am very supportive of it, but I'm also, I just wanted to have a comprehend, I wanted the people of Trenton to have a comprehensive, a comprehensive understanding of what is being proposed. And I don't think anyone had clarity on what this board was, what was, was, uh, the, the intent of this board. And, uh, I thank you, Councilman Blakely, for providing that additional information, and also, Mr. Klowdri, for the clarity. Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Council Vice President Colwell Wilson. And that's all I have.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, I, uh, agree with, uh, Councilman Blakely. Uh, the reason was, it was poor, it was the language that was there, uh, uh, that they had to clarify to make it, uh, match, because the Senate passed the portion of the bill. But then, the Assembly had to adapt it to the same bill the Senate passed. So that's, they, they hold up. That's why they put it. It wasn't, but still, the bill is going to, uh, go, go forward. And I'm supporting it because it's about time, you know, that, we discussing city council once, uh, Councilman Blakely, the proposal for a civilian review board in Trenton. But, the way it was, it had no subpoena power. So, it was, uh, it was useless in a way, because they couldn't do anything. But this time, around, if this passes, it will give, uh, subpoena power. And it will make justice to the injustices that have been committed, you know, by, I have nothing against the Police Department, but how can an internal unit of the same department investigate the department? You know, that, that is, uh, to me, that's a contradiction. It should be somebody from the outside doing it. And it's about time that, uh,
No, no interruptions.
Here, is let, uh, the Assembly know that we support the bill with subpoena power. That's all we are doing. You know, it's not, uh, uh, we are not going to, uh, uh, change people's minds, but, but we are going to tell them that Trenton, city council is supporting that.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Mr. Conlon, you can move the vote.
President Mc, uh, uh, President Protem, uh, Colwell Wilson, can I make one final point about the petition? It's, it's, it's my resolution.
Please keep it short, Mr. Blakely, we've got a long agenda.
I, I don't understand why you're so antagonistic. I just asked a question. So I'm going to be very quick and just say that, um, I have a good relationship with the police unions in Trenton. Uh, I think that, uh, Michael Chittaretti is, is a good man. I think he's a good person. And I just think that a civilian review board would remove bad apples that serve to denigrate all of the hard-working police officers, uh, in the city of Trenton. Thank you.
Thank you. Move the vote, Mr. Conlon. Mr. Conlon?
It would help if I unmuted myself. I have an introduction, I have an introduction by Mr. Blakely. Do I have a second?
Look at.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. I'll now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, yes.
The Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
So, so order the resolution characters. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash three ninety-one, a resolution urging the elimination of memorandum of understanding, imposing oversight by the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs into governance of the city of Trenton.
Council Vice President?
It's actually Mr. Rodriguez is, uh,
Excuse me?
Yes, I, 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 I move it.
Council Vice President?
Mr. Rodriguez, do I, and I have a second by Ms. Vaughn, who also wanted to move this. Ms. Vaughn, did you want a second?
Second.
And you'll also be a co-sponsor, uh, as per the agreement at the conference session. Uh, the floor is open.
Any comments?
Right. Council Vice President? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Right, um, this resolution, there are urgent elimination of memorandum of understanding. Um, I'm going to be voting against this, and this is why. Um, this council's, uh, voted against bonds. This council's voted against a zero-budget increase. Uh, we voted, council members wanted to give ourselves raves, give our, give our aides raise. Um, we voted, council members voted against Prinstell. Still do not see the evidence regarding Prinstell. Um, the hazard pay. Members on this council wanted to wait on that. I didn't believe that the city employees should have to wait on that. So at the end of the day, I think this council has a lot of fault. Um, not only that, we still had the, uh, cannabis. We had an incident where the planning board and the public wanted one thing, and the council wanted something else. So at the end of the day, I think this council's not been genuine. It's been all over the place. But we're going to, we're going to urge other people to do their job, and we haven't been doing our, our job. What the people want us to do is move this city forward. Thank you.
So I would just like to say something, especially, Mr. Harrison. This is not an ordinance. This is just a recommendation. Thank you. You can move the vote, Mr. Conlon.
I'd like to say something. I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Now, I totally agree with my colleague, Mr. Harrison. And I definitely, um, you know, generally agree with him ninety-nine percent out of the time. I think he's a great councilman. I think he's a smart guy. However, I have to say that the people of Trenton deserve the same democracy that the folks in Hamilton have, the folks in Pennington have, the folks in, uh, West Windsor and Princeton have. Unfortunately, I believe that the memorandum, memorandum of understanding is, is anti-democratic. People at Trenton deserve to have elected officials with power. And, you know, quite frankly, I, I don't think it's fair that communities like Atlantic City and Trenton have training wheels on. We have significant historical issues that have been, you know, issues for years. And I just think, um, that, you know, we should have the same right of self-governance as any other community in this state. And, you know, for that reason, I am opposed, uh, to, um, you know, the, uh, the MOU. I, I think that, uh, you know, we shouldn't have it. So for that reason, and, and who sponsored this ordinance or this resolution?
Uh, this came from Mr. Rodriguez, sir.
I think he's correct. I'm going to be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
And it was co-sponsored by Ms. Vaughn.
Move the vote.
Council Vice President? Council Vice President?
Mr. Harrison, you've already spoken. We need to let Mr. Rodriguez speak. Mr. Rodriguez, does he want to speak?
Yeah, yes, I want to say a few words about this. Uh, we tried this before, the beginning of our term, and it was voted down. If, uh, the, the MOU through the past, past three and a half years, if, if city council is not convinced that, uh, this MOU is not good for Trenton, I don't know where we have been through the past three and a half years. We could have, we have faced, uh, situations where to hire, to hire, uh, the administration to hire a person, they have to go to DCA, to the state. They decide when we hire or when we fire, how do we spend our money, when to spend it. They even control our budget. You know, they have the guts to, to, to go against our will. They did that the first, uh, year, you know? So it's unfair. It's holding the city back. It's holding the administration back. Although, you know, my point is, I don't know why the administration have not been fighting for this. Why this type of resolution has not come directly from the administration? Because, uh, uh, this is, we have to get rid of that MOU. We have gone through hell because of it. So it's about time that we get rid of it, and thus, it's just asking them to remove it. And we should all be together in this. Everybody in Trenton should be, should agree that this MOU, uh, tying our hands, tying, you know, to our backs, is not good for the city. It's not good for the residents. You know, because we cannot do anything without notifying the state, you know? That, that is unfair. You know, just a few cities have it. Uh, they lifted the Patterson one. They, they have been lifting all, all, all of them. You know, except for Trenton, and like, uh, Councilman Blakely said, Atlantic City, and Plably, and other cities. But this MOU is forcing you, us, to, uh, a-accept this, uh, all the transitional aid, is, which is no good for, for, for the city, you know? We need to be able to work by ourselves. We got, we have elected officials. It's not that we are dictated. We were elected by the residents, but we have this thing called MOU holding us back, but. So, uh, we'll bow to it, uh, a hundred times if I have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Uh, Council Vice President, Council Vice, Council Vice President Colwellson?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yes, um, as co-sponsor, I appreciate again, Council Rodriguez placing me on the resolution. I did raise this resolution when I came on, and four council members voted against it. And I'm glad that Councilman Blakely has come around and now supporting this. Uh, in the beginning, he did not. Um, and that resolution failed, and that's part of our record. Uh, but I'm glad to see that Councilman Blake, uh, Councilman Rodriguez, uh, has persevered here and felt that it should be reintroduced at this time in, in the third year of our tenure. Um, I will say that, it, yes, this, this, uh, memorandum of understanding is grossly unfair. It has no end date. It has been put into, it, it's perpetual, which is, again, unheard of for any contract or agreement. Um, there's no end date whatsoever, and our municipality and the residents and taxpayers of it deserve it, deserves it, uh, into it. Um, but most importantly, it's unconstitutional. Uh, the state of New Jersey, like all other states in the, the union, um, all other fifty states in the union operate, are in gov, are in, in govern under the principle of home rule. And our state constitution is based on it, home rule. It means that the state has minimal interference in municipal affairs. Municipalities, uh, are governed by their own, uh, elected government. We have our elected mayor. We have our elected council. We have our own fire department. We have our own school district. We have our own police department. We buy, we have our own tax base that, that pays for those services. And the state has no business, per the state constitution, New Jersey co, state constitution of nineteen forty-seven, that all municipalities operate under, and govern on their home rule. So this memorandum of understanding is, quite frankly, unconstitutional. And it would not hold up in any court of law, if we were to pursue that avenue. So I would, uh, definitely support this, and, uh, So I would uh definitely support this, and um, and I advocate for uh uh equal application of the law, equal application of the constitution to the city of Trenton. And for that, I will be supporting this uh resolution.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something too. When this um memorandum of understanding, when the first one was signed, the whole purpose of transitional aid was every year it would decrease until it went away. DCA didn't follow those rules. They added more money. And I know for a fact that I'm sure that the mayor and the administration would like to release this burden from us so that we can govern financially the way we're supposed to govern without having to throw all the red tape. So I will support it also. You can move the vote, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I have an introduction by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Vaughn, your co-sponsor then.
Yep, second.
Uh, I have an introduction by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Ms. Vaughn. Now call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Mr. Harrison's on mute.
No, no, no.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council president McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
So ordered, the resolution carries by a vote of four to one with two members absent. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash three ninety-two, a resolution urging the governor and state legislature to restore capital city aid to the city of Trenton.
Uh, I I move it.
Second?
Uh, this is Mr. Rodriguez's resolution, and once again, uh, he's agreed to co-sponsor with Ms. Vaughn. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Ms. Vaughn. Floor is open.
Uh, council, council vice president Colwell Wilson?
Go ahead, councilwoman.
I I would just say very briefly um that this is sort of related to the removal of the MOU. Um, uh, municipality should manage their own fiscal affairs, and we should uh uh source our tax base, and state properties are part of that tax base, and they sit in our municipality, so it it should pay its fair share. Um, and I'm all for of, I'm all for uh getting the capital city aid reinstalled um and renegotiate it to a level that is fair and to market. So I will be sort of uh uh supporting this, whether it's called capital city aid, whether it's called pilot, I don't care what it's called, so long as the state of New Jersey is paying their fair share of the taxes in this city where their buildings sit and where the city of Trenton services uh uh support. We, our fire department support those buildings, our police department support those buildings. They tear up, they ride and uh and and use our infrastructure, our streets, our roads, our bridges. So um for that, they need to contribute, just like any other business and resident of the city. And and I will be supporting this. Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, and thank you, Vice President Colwell Wilson.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Motion on the floor to table, and I must proceed with the vote. We are in the middle of the vote. Mr. Harrison, your vote, sir?
I'm voting no. I don't want to, I, I, I would like to reconsider my vote.
Mr. Blakeley.
And I would.
Mr. Harrison's.
Yeah, I would like.
Did you say you're table?
I do not want to table this.
This, this is the table. Please explain that this is a, Mr. Conlon, please explain that this is, this is a resolution to dissolve the Trenton Parking Authority, and it is sponsored by Councilwoman Vaughn, and she is requesting to table it.
That is correct. All of that is correct. Mr. Harrison, this is the table of the resolution to a later date indefinitely.
Right. Yes, yes, correct.
Harrison votes to table. Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez is to table.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn to table?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson to table.
Yes.
So order the resolution to table indefinitely. Ms. Vaughn, if you want to bring this back to the floor, please let me know. Next, we have Resolution 21-393, a resolution authorizing the use of competitive contracting in lieu of public bidding for telecommunications maintenance and programming services. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Vaughn. The floor is open.
Yeah, this, uh, this, this resolution had brought some concern about the particular approach to, um, to contracting and going through the competitive bid contracting. We just wanted it to, uh, to ensure that this particular, uh, uh, business is being, is restricted to this business of telecommunications and voice communication. And I believe, uh, the business administrator mentioned, um, security systems that are connected to, um, uh, phone, phone technology. So, so, um, yeah, uh, if so long as it's restricted to uh, those services, then we should move the vote.
You can move the vote, Mr. Conlon. Thank you, Councilwoman.
I have motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson, a second by Ms. Vaughn. I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakeley.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Blakeley votes yes. Ms. Colwell.
Wait, wait, wait. This is a res, oh, I'm sorry, sorry. This is a res, this is 21-424?
No, sir, this is 21-393. My apologies. I had the wrong one on the screen, but we, we read it into the record.
Who, this is from the administration?
Yes, sir. This is Adam Curry, the business administrator.
Okay, yeah. Uh, yes, yes.
Mr. Blakeley votes yes. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, no.
Mr. Rodriguez votes no. Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Vaughn votes yes. Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Colwell Wilson votes yes. The resolution carries by a count of four to one with two members absent.
Council Vice President? Council Vice President?
Yes.
Do we know if the council president's gonna log back on?
Uh, council president, and I was, I was waiting to announce that council president's device has died, and she called me from another device. She's not going to be able to rejoin the meeting.
I'm sorry, my lid fell.
Uh, so she will not be rejoining.
You can move the vote, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Resolution 21-394. This is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of $4 million from the funds allocated to the city of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for repair and improvements to the water system serviced by the city. Do I have a motion?
Some move. Some move.
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Floor is open.
Now, uh, Council Vice President Colwell Wilson?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yes, um, again, this was originally introduced as a bond under the Water Department, and, um, and then it was opted that we use the Rescue Act plan, which it, which, under that plan, it might funding, it does permit us to do so, to, um, fund, uh, uh, infrastructure, um, projects like this one is. Um, however, um, does, does this require, uh, supermajority or, um, majority vote, Mr. Conlon?
Uh, I'm gonna have to defer to the lawyers for this. I believe it's just a simple majority for the allocation of the funds.
Okay, um.
I would defer to Mr. Bridges and/or Mr. Koloji in this matter, please.
Mr. Koloji? Mr. Koloji, are you there?
Well, he gets on, I believe it's a, the simple majority.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I totally agree. It's a simple majority.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, yeah, so, all right, uh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to move to the, to the vote on this one.
All right. You can go ahead with the vote, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. This is Resolution 21-394, a resolution authorizing expenditure of $4 million from the funds allocated to the city of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for repair and improvements to the water system serviced by the city. I have a motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson, a second by Mr. Harrison. Mr. Blakeley, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Blakeley votes yes. Mr. Harrison, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison, yes. Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez votes yes. Ms. Vaughn, your vote, ma'am?
I'm going abstain.
Ms. Vaughn abstains. Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson, your vote, ma'am?
Yes.
The eyes have it four with one abstention and two members absent. So ordered. Next, we have Resolution 21-395, a resolution authorizing a study by the planning board to determine whether the entire city of Trenton should be designated as in need of rehabilitation.
Mr. Conlon, I have something to say about this. I would like to, um, uh, table this until we hear back from our economic development, um, attorney. Um, we have to have further discussion on this before we vote it.
I have a motion to table by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Please say it, please.
I have a second by Ms. Vaughn. And I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakeley to table?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Mr. Blakeley votes yes to table. Ms. Col, uh, Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Motion is tabled. Such time as an opinion is rendered by Mr. Hoffman. Let me just make a note of that.
Go ahead, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just taking my notes. I don't wanna, I don't wanna lose it. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 21-426, a resolution authorizing payment to Chubb Insurance Company in New Jersey, 500 Broad Street, I-54, Z-0455, Pittsburgh, PA, 1-5262, Z-001, for property insurance premium in an amount not to exceed $352,582. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Vaughn. Floor is open. Would you like me to move the vote, ma'am?
You can move the vote, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakeley?
Yes.
Thank you. Let me just get the resolution up. Sorry, it's, it's, I only have two hands. Uh, this is the resolution here. Uh, Mr. Blakeley votes yes. Uh, Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
So order, resolution carries by a vote of five with two members absent. Next, we have Resolution 21-396, a resolution authorizing settlement in civil matter of 21st century media LLC versus the city of Trenton et al. Do I have a motion?
Some move. Second.
A motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson, a second by Ms. Vaughn. Floor is open.
You can call it. You can call it, Vaughn.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
So ordered. Next, we have Resolution 21-397, a resolution authorizing the award of contract with Riker.
I thought that was consent. Wasn't that a consent?
It may be, very well be. Hold on one second. Uh, I may have run over my notes. I did. Thank you very much, ma'am. My next we have resolution, this is consent. Resolution 21-398.
That was consent.
Judge, 21-398 is the, uh, is the other, uh, one of the other litigation matters now. Uh, 21-398, a resolution authorizing settlement in the civil matter of advanced waterfront development, urban renewal versus the city of Trenton et al. Do I have a motion?
Some move. Second.
Motion, I believe, by Ms. Vaughn was the first one to the gate. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Would you like me to move the, move the vote, ma'am?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakeley?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
So order, the resolution carries by a vote of five to zero with two members absent. Next, we have Resolution 21-399, a resolution authorizing settlement of civil action in the matter of Sherlin Rivera versus the city of Trenton et al. in a total amount of $30,000. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Vaughn. Would you like me to move the vote, ma'am?
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakeley?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Thank you. Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to zero, 1420 South Broad Street, Trenton, New Jersey, 08610, to be awarded from April 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2021, to provide Federal Communication Commission, FCC, private carry station infrastructure services for rated communications in an amount not to exceed $145,612 and 50 cents.
I'm moved that we tabled this, um, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion to table by Ms. Colwell Wilson. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
And this is.
Table indefinitely?
Yes.
And that's why I was asking. Table indefinitely. Thank you, sir. Uh, motion table indefinitely by Ms. Colwell Wilson, a second by Ms. Vaughn. Ma'am, would you like me to call the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakeley to table?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
To table, uh, I'm sorry, to table, could you, could you bring up the orders, please, on the, on the screen?
Sure. That should be the next one. There you are, yes, sir.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Blakeley votes table. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to zero with two members absent. Next, we have Resolution 21-404, a resolution authorizing emergency appropriations to the transitional year 2021 temporary budgets in the city of Trenton Current Fund.
Uh, some move. Second, uh.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson, a second by Ms. Vaughn. Floor is open.
I, I don't know where we stand on the appropriations or the budget. Um, perhaps, um, Vice Pres, Vice Chair Colwell Wilson could explain. We, we got a letter from DCA today stating that we were late in our budget. Um, do, are, is that, are we not gonna get an extension, um, Vice Chair?
Well, I, I'm gonna ask Mr. Zelinski to address that. Mr. Zelinski? Mr. Zelinski?
Uh, Mr. Zel- Sorry, gotta unmute here. I'm not, not on my iPad anymore. Um, that is, they, again, want us to move along timely. They had hoped we were gonna adopt the budget sooner. What I believe I got today, somebody emailed me, um, is they set the tax rate for the city of Trenton. We still have to adopt the budget, but the budget that we adopt is gonna have to equal the tax rate that they set. So that's where we, we are with that.
Mr. Zelinski, we got a letter today saying we're late with our budget. But what is the issue, what?
Uh, hold on one second, ma'am. Let me, let me find out who's, ladies and gentlemen, if you are not on the, or not on the, uh, not being asked the question, can you please mute yourself in IT? Can you please help me?
Please mute yourself, whoever you are.
I'm looking for it, ma'am. Sorry about that. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Mr. Zelinski.
Yeah, they, um, I guess they're trying to get ahead of the curve. We need to get to a budget adopted timely to send out tax bills that are due November 1st. And I believe by moving the meeting back to October 5th, we will not be able to do that. So they impose their will to set our tax rate, so we can mail the tax bills out timely and have them due by November 1st.
So they get, so they permitted the extension?
Well, they set the tax rate. I guess it's a, we can adopt the budget anytime, but we have to make sure that it equals the amount to be raised that they noted in the letter.
Ms. Vaughn, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and, um, and that's very concerning because I think that, um, somehow disadvantages the, 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 the city, right? Because, and when I read the letter, it wasn't clear on what that tax rate is going to be.
No, well, the tax rate ends up, because hopefully, I'm gonna deviate a little bit here. Hopefully, the change to calendar year will resolve what our tax rate is on a timely basis. Um, because we have a first half billing and then a second half billing, the County Board of Taxation has to determine what the tax rate's gonna be.
Councilwoman, I just, I just got information that they, they did approve the extension.
Okay.
Okay.
Council Vice President?
And having said that.
Yes, Mr. Harrison. Are you finished, Councilwoman?
No, not yet. Um, Mr. Zelinski, since they, uh, well, they approved the extension, which is a good thing, but they're gonna still move forward because of time, um, and we won't be, uh, complete in time to issue a tax rate for the third quarter billing. So, uh, so the tax, so we need to communicate to the taxpayers that, that the resident taxpayers in business, what that rate is going to be. And I would assume that once we pass, so, once we pass our budget, will we be able to amend that rate and, and pass a credit to the, uh, a potential credit to the taxpayers?
No, this is gonna be, this is the final amount to be raised. There won't be any adjustment to the bill.
Yeah, that's what I, I thought. That's what I thought I read. Um, so they're gonna, they're gonna tax the rate.
Yes, they've essentially determined the amount to be raised, and whatever that amount equals, that's gonna be the tax rate.
Wow. So we.
Is there an incre, is there an increase? That's what I want to know.
I, the, the intent has always been to keep the tax rate the same as it was last calendar year. And I'll have to check that out in the morning.
Yeah, and, um, and, uh, the sooner the better, because I, I have a lot of folks in the city of Trenton, and particularly here in the West Ward, our largest residential tax base, are, 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 you know, they're anxious to know whether or not they're gonna see this increase, and if it's gonna be an increase, how large it's gonna be. Because since we're coming out of COVID, no one really anticipated an, an increase, but the way that letter was written, it seems like it's gonna be an increase of, of significance. Because we know that we, we don't have sufficient revenues, and that's what, uh, my concern has been when I heard that the mayor was not gonna use the, um, the Rescue Act plans funding to help offset any shortfalls in the budget. Uh, so it's gonna fall.
There is $7 million in the budget for lost revenue from AARP.
Seven million, you said?
Seven million dollars in the budget for lost revenue.
Mm-hmm. And we're gonna apply the, uh, like the $5 million transitional aid, right?
Now, I'm not, not following you. There's $5 million there. That's a $5 million granted by police cars and some other selected capital items.
So we really gonna have a shortfall?
You shouldn't.
So, Councilwoman, I, I would like Mr. Cherry to speak on this, if you don't mind.
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Cherry?
Can we put the resolution up, Council Vice President?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr., and Mr. Cherry, would you speak on this issue?
Absolutely. Um, as far, I, I will acknowledge that I have not, I did not see this letter until we, uh, began this council meeting, so I haven't had the opportunity to, um, compare it with our budget. But my understanding is that the rate that was set by the, um, DCA was intended to be the tax rate included in our introduced budget, which, as Mr. Zelinski said, would keep the tax rate the same as it was for the prior calendar year. Um, as well, when we talked about incorporating this, um, this, uh, rescue plan money in the, uh, budget, as I said during the presentation, and as Mr. Zelinski just spoke to, we did incorporate 7 million, um, in lost revenue in this budget, um, for capital improvement fund to help reduce our, our reliance on bonding during this six-month budget. And as far as I know, and again, as Mr. Zelinski said, we can run some numbers in the morning, we do not anticipate, uh, any tax increase from, in this calendar year compared to last calendar year. And then when we go to our next calendar year budget, we will again have that opportunity, but we still don't anticipate any shortfalls, um, in that plan.
So, so let me ask you this, um, Mr. Cherry. If the rate that they have put down as for the, for the tax levy, if that causes even half a cent increase, will, will the taxpayers, will that be taken out of their next bill?
I suppose I'm not clear exactly what you mean by taken out of their next bill, but, um.
Well, well, they should be reimbursed. So that's, that, that should be, that should be corrected in the, then the next tax bill they get.
If the, you're saying if the tax rate that was struck by DCA causes an increase?
Yes.
Uh, if the tax rate, I, I don't wanna speculate on, on that. I, I can't be sure. As I said, I just received it while we were on this council meeting, and I haven't had the opportunity to run the numbers, um, with our finance team, but we will do that tomorrow. But we don't anticipate any, any increases. We don't see any particular reason that there would be. DCA accepted our budget, uh, and accepted the extension, and is anticipating an adoption on October 5th. It is our understanding at this moment that they fix the tax rate to the tax rate set in the introduced budget, which again, represents a tax, uh, citizens should see their taxes this calendar year identical to their taxes last calendar year for the local purpose taxes.
When you rerun the numbers, could you please update council members on that? I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely. We will get a report on the situation to the clerk for distribution to all members of council tomorrow, if that's acceptable to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Are you through, Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. We can move the vote, Mr. Conlon.
Yes, I have an introduction, but this is Resolution 21-404, a resolution authorizing emergency appropriations to the Trent, to the transitional year 2021 temporary budgets of the city of Trenton Current Fund. I have motion by Ms. Colwell Wilson, a second by Ms. Vaughn. Mr. Blakeley?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Resolution carries with a vote of five to zero, two members absent. Uh, on the next resolution, I just wanted to explain a typo on the docket. Uh, this resolution was actually updated and, and a typo carried over in the docket. Uh, the amount is actually $50,000. It was amended, uh, from $350,000 to $50,000 between Tuesday and Thursday. Uh, so I apologize for the mistake that carried over on the docket, that that wasn't changed. Uh, this is Resolution 21-406. Uh, this is a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the law offices Goldenberg, Mackler, Sayah, Minz, Pepper, Bonshi, and Gil to provide specialized professional legal services regarding in-room tactical closure litigation matters through fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 19:44, F.A., 20.5 that second in amount not to exceed $50,000 per RFP 2021-25. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Colwell Wilson. The floor is open.
Well, Madam President?
Yes, uh, Councilman?
Uh, on Tuesday, I was promised by the Law Department Director that he was gonna send, he mailed all council members the record of this contract. This is not a new contract. We had this before, and I requested to see, you know, how many, uh, court closures, you know, and the details on the, at least the last year, what happened with the money that we have been approving to this attorney. And I never received that information.
Mr. Bridges?
Yes, Council Vice President, I may. I, I, I thought we had some discussion in terms of whether this was the same entity or a new entity, and that, uh, satisfied your, 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 uh, request. If you still would like to have that prior voting on this, I'm happy to.
No, 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 Mr. Bridges, you, uh, we, you told me that you were gonna, your assistant attorney was gonna do it, and I requested for you to send it to every council member Tuesday. Don't tell me that I'm lying now.
I, I, I would not accuse you of lying, Councilman. I, that, that was not what I was doing. I thought we had some discussion about where this came from and whether it was a new entity, and we had some discussion that it was the same entity.
That was, that was one question. But what I requested was.
Council, uh, Council, Councilman, I'm, I'm happy to.
Four closures, and you said that you were gonna send it.
Council, Councilman, I, I, again, I thought that we addressed your concerns during, during our, our quality back forth.
You did not, you did not.
Mr. Santiago, Mr. Rodriguez, let him finish.
Ca, Councilman. I, 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 Councilman, I did not call you a liar, nor would I call anybody on this call liar. What I said was I thought I answered the question. However, if it's not answered to your sufficiency, I am happy to pull this and to provide the information. We could put it on the next docket. Again, we had, I, I am not finished talking. I, I'm not done talking.
Please let him finish, please.
I'm not done talking.
Mr. Rodriguez, let him finish.
I understand your, I understand your concern. I thought we addressed this during the last call, however, it's not addressed. I am happy to pull this now and to provide that information to you. I did not call you a liar. I simply said I thought we addressed your concerns during our call. Your concerns clear?
So, Mr. Conlon.
Therefore, your, your concerns clearly were not addressed. Therefore, I would like to pull this so I can address your concerns, Council.
Mr. Bridges, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Conlon, Mr. Bridges has offered to pull this resolution.
Uh, do I have a motion to table by council until Mr. Bridges, uh, provides the.
Some move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison to table. Uh...
Second.
Until, until your opinion.
Till the next meeting.
Record, yeah, record, or next meeting. I'm sure Mr. Bridges, I'm sure Mr. Bridges will get it out tomorrow. Motion by Mr. Harrison to table to next meeting. Have a second.
Second.
Ms. Colwell-Wolson, I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Mark me as a no vote.
Mr. Rodriguez, no vote?
This is to table it.
Yes, I am aware of it. But anyone getting bored with that?
Uh, uh, yes.
Ms. Vaughn votes yes. Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell-Wolson?
Yes.
So, the resolution is tabled until the next meeting. Next, we have Resolution 21-410. Resolution accepting the award of a negotiated contract with Pool Boys Spa and Spa LLC for on-call swimming pool maintenance for five public swimming pools for a period of one year from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
This needs a super majority, Mr. Connell?
This does need a super majority, ma'am. And if you would like to know why, Mr. Bridges and Mr. Koloji, I believe, are ready with an opinion on that.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely. Floor is open.
The council, Council Vice President, yeah. I think it's worthy, I think would be, I think it would be good if one of the attorneys, I would prefer Mr. Koloji to explain why this particular resolution requires a super majority. Because we get this often, right, that we're getting contracts that have gone out to bid and the administration comes back and say, well, we chose this one because, you know, it was the lowest bidder and the responsible bidder, and also it was the only entity or contractor that submitted a bid. So when an instance where a, where they've done everything by the book, they advertise, they advertise not once but twice, and yet only one contractor applied to, responded to the RP. So when that happens, they have the ability to go out per the law, the New Jersey local contract law, to negotiate the contract with that single vendor. And, but however, it requires two-thirds of a vote, the council, which I got to be honest, that was never told to us. So, Mr. Koloji, can you, you know, eloquently, as always do, provide us the education on why we need to do this?
Yeah, I don't know about the eloquence, but I'll try. Is, I'm trying to pull up, is this the resolution we discussed where the department head indicated there were two prior attempts where there were either no bids or bids were rejected?
There's a lot of...
I've taken care of it, ma'am. Yes, Mr. Koloji, this is the one regarding the two...
I read the department head summary, and it was indicated that there were two prior attempts to bid this out without responses. The local public contracts law, NJSA 40, capital A, called in 11-5, has a section that contains exceptions to the rule that things have to be bid. And when the town, or the city tries to bid out something, and two times they either don't get bids or they don't get acceptable bids, I'm just summarizing it, there's a lot of verbiage in there. It basically says the contract may then be negotiated and awarded upon the adoption of a resolution by a two-thirds affirmative vote of the authorized membership of the governing body. So this will require five votes to pass, even though you only have five votes here tonight.
We just tabled this until we have a full, full membership present?
It's Mr. Blakely, ma'am. Mr. Blakely's taking a motion to table till a, I'm assuming to the next meeting or to, sir, or, you know, you're, I can't guarantee a full membership at the next meeting. Everybody's usually here, but you never know what's going to happen.
Yeah, I think it's prudent that we have a full body of members before we vote on this.
Mr. Blakely, would the next meeting be all right for now? Sir, for your motion to table?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. So I have a motion to table, my Mr. Blakely?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
To next meeting. I have a second by Ms. Colwell-Wolson, who's actually the first one back in the conversation. They'll call the roll to table, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Colwell-Wolson?
Yes.
Table. The motion carries by a vote of 5 to 0, two members absent. Will be tabled at the next meeting. The next item, I'm going to need a, on Tuesday, was pointed out, the next item is Resolution 21-411. I'll read the caption to the record, but there is a procedural issue with this. This is Resolution 21-41.
Mr. Colin, I thought that was pulled.
That's why I'm just going to read the title.
He's going to explain that.
Okay.
This is Resolution accepting a bid and awarding contract to Zampa Relli Contractors LLC for construction of ADA compliant ramps at directed at various locations within the city of Trenton, 2021-4, for 2021-1, for a period of one year, from June 24, 2021 to June 23, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $750,000 to bid 2021-36. This particular resolution failed under, on, I'm sorry, on July 8, 2021. Accordingly, the rules of procedure will not be allowed to come back unless the, unless a motion to suspend the rule is made, which would also require a super majority to suspend the rule. Accordingly, the, you know, and I'm going to solicit the, if I can, council chair, the vice of Mr. Koloji, can we just move past this on the procedural and note it for the record and then move to the next resolution, sir?
Absolutely.
Or should there be a formal vote?
What is the question, whether we can?
Yeah, under A316, A316 has the one-year ban on a resolution that fails, and this did fail on July 8, 2021, and it did make it through the docket process. However, Council President pointed on Tuesday that it did fail procedurally, it should not be heard at this time, and I just wanted to confirm that before we move on, if that would be proper proceed.
Yeah, that's the provision of A316, the one-year provision. The only way it could be brought back up, I would say, is with a super majority vote to suspend the rule or if there were a new bid and it were a different amount, a different date, that would be a different resolution.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to get your, the opinion on the record for that. Thank you, pencil chair, that being...
Council Vice President?
Yes, go ahead.
It's Council...
Go ahead, Council.
This was put back on the docket because it's not the right construction company. It was told by Director Wally on Tuesday that it was the wrong company. And we still have the name of the wrong company, and we're not, I mean, he said it over and over, it's not the company that we're, people were saying, but we weren't listening. I mean, could Wally elaborate again? I mean, it's, that's what I'm saying. We pulled this off the docket. What's that? I can't hear you.
Mr. Connell?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Please go through the process here.
I can't hear you. What'd you think?
Okay, so, so, Mr. Harrison, what she's basically asking is, she's going to move, she wants to move forward because under A316, even if the information was incorrect, it was still voted on. In order to resuscitate it and bring it back, it would have to be voted, somebody would have to raise a motion with a super majority to suspend the rule in order to bring it back, and Mr. Koloji had explained that just a minute ago. And that, so if you wanted to bring, if you wanted to bring this back...
Like I said, Council Vice President, it should, you should have been listening to Wally, he explained it, but we didn't. So this is what I'm saying, when the council doesn't listen and doesn't do the right thing. Here's another case. Check that down.
Well, there, and sir, I'd be happy to work with you to draft a resolution that would, you know, to do that if you want me...
So, Mr. Connell, due to the fact that this, this was voted down in the past, it has come back in another form of resolution, is that correct?
I believe it's actually pretty much the same resolution, it was just given a different number because I, because it failed previously, so that resolution had been...
Because there was confusion about the companies, right?
Well, the, I think there was some confusion as to whether this was the company that installed the ramps backward, and I'm not, I'm not familiar with all of the companies, so I'm going to stay away from it. But I do know that this is actually, it's not, I believe the confusion was that this was affiliated with Diamond, and it actually is affiliated with Rippey is another company that works out of the same address location and corporate structure. So it's not Diamond.
Right. You put it up on the screen, right, Mr. Collins? Tuesday night, you put that up on the screen. You put up that on the screen Tuesday night to verify...
The addresses for Rippey and for Zampa Relli are the same. They do not match the address for Diamond. That's the only, I don't know whether that means anything, but, you know...
So I, Mr. Harrison, please. So I'm going to suggest that we take a vote to suspend the rules and move this forward.
Council Vice President, if I may, also?
Yes.
I was not here when this ordinance, these rules of procedure passed, but based on the rule that I'm looking at...
The resolution.
That resolution, that rule applied to resolutions that were brought by council, the one-year non-vote-again rule. That was not applicable to resolutions that were brought by administration, and I'm actually looking at that resolution now, and it's pretty clear that... Respectfully, this is the council's floor. This is, they moved all resolutions on this floor, the administration doesn't have a seat on the council, and all resolutions must be moved by the council. So even though it was brought forth by, put forth by the administration through a council person, you know, I disagree on the procedural part of that, but that is... That's your interpretation of that? That is my interpretation. That's what I... Thank you for your interpretation.
I put a motion on the floor.
Yeah, Council Vice President, are you Colwell-Wolson?
Yes, Councilwoman.
The reason why this was pulled, failed the last time, due to its concern that this did not properly go out to bid, that this particular company had gotten a contract not through the, you know, the fair and open process, and that there were no other bidders, and then they changed their name to Zampa Relli when they were always known as Rippey Concrete. And to give the, well, allegedly to give the impression that they were a different company, but they're not. They're the same company, changed their name, has nothing to do with Diamond at all, that the company that I believe George and Councilwoman Michelle and Councilwoman Rodriguez had concerns with the quality of the work. No, this is an issue or questionable around whether this company received this contract competitively and fairly, and it doesn't, and, you know, they have gotten it the same one every year. And it's just curious as to whether it went out to bid, and that was the question, that was the reason why it failed initially.
Council Vice President?
Go ahead, Councilman.
That's not true. It was, it was stated that it was regards to Diamond Construction. That's what it was in reference to. Mr. Wally Onatary explained that on Tuesday, and this is what I'm saying again, we still are not listening. Can we please have Wally, Council Vice President, speak on this? Because this is, this...
Director Onatary, would you like to speak on this again?
Yes, good evening, Council Vice President, good evening, Council. Exactly what the Councilman Harrison said initially when this came up, it was, the question was, this seems Zampa Relli, somebody misunderstood them for Diamond, and I tried to explain that, that it's not the same thing. So they did not vote on it, it was pulled out. So we came back with it again to show that it's not Diamond, and that was when this whole thing was on. There's a complete mix-up about Diamond. The Diamond was the original name and not the Rippey part of it, that was causing the confusion. And this is not Diamond, and I've tried to explain to that, and when you talk about these people get the bid, yes, they are the lowest responsible bidder, and that is what we have to go for, and the reason why they are, I've explained is that they are local as far as moving their equipment to work site that creates that kind of expenses for the city. That is why we selected them. I don't know who these people are.
So, Director, Director, I have one question, and I'm going to make a statement because I want to on record. I know that they low, they really low-bidded this contract, and if they, they come back for an extension, you bring this back for an extension, you won't get my vote.
That's, I believe, I believe that was the actual reasoning of the council why it was denied, not because of the Diamond, the Diamond thing was clarified on the second vote, but that's...
Madam President?
For the record.
Yes, Councilman.
Point of clarification, on Tuesday, Mr. Wally said that I was the one that was concerned about Diamond. It has to be clarified, that wasn't me. The people that mentioned Diamond was Councilwoman Muschar and Councilwoman Marsh Cardwood Wilson.
No, I didn't mention them.
Right? Councilwoman, it was, I didn't mention anything about this resolution, so my name did not be involved in this.
Okay. Well, again... My concern was the low bids, the really low bids. It concerns me.
And Council Vice President Colwell-Wolson, I have a floor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
And I will repeat again, and this is sort of the same issue about the previous resolution that we had to table to get two-thirds a vote. So when the administration goes out to bid, I did research on this, Mr. Onatary, forget Diamond, this has nothing to do with Diamond, and you know it, Mr. Onatary. Zampa Relli, as Mr. Colin also confirmed, changed their name from Rippey Concrete. You can go back into the code and pull out all the resolutions and all the previous contracts were under Rippey, Rippey Concrete, and you know who Rippey Concrete is because you've been here for over the period of time when they received these contracts. So all of a sudden, when they were questioned about getting the contract every year for the past 10 years, now you can't tell me that they have been the lowest bidder, the lowest responsible bidder for 10 years. So, so they're on rotation like clockwork, my friend. So that raises a red flag as to how you are selecting your vendors. And this is not a small contract, this is a 750,000 contract, three-quarters of a million dollars. So I want to make sure that these contracts are being awarded fairly and competitively. Now, you can sit here and keep claiming that, with no credibility, that Zampa Relli and Rippey Concrete are not the same organization when they are, and it has been proven to you time and time again that they are the same organization. So I'm just asking you, how, where are the other bidders? And how many are there? And why haven't you sent them to us? And how many are there? And why haven't you sent them to us, so that we can review them? That's, that's the reason why I, that, that has been my question all along.
Councilwoman, there were four bidders.
There were four bidders, mhm. And that was this year, right, for this particular RFP? So, um, so Zampa Rely has gotten, oh, you know, AKA Rippey Concrete, has gotten it in prior year and a prior year after that. So, Mr. Onatary, what is your, what is your reasoning for choosing the same contractor over and over again? When we all know that the lowest bidder is not the only criteria?
Council Vice President?
Yes, go ahead, Director.
Uh, okay, yeah, Councilwoman. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Uh, one of the criteria we choose in selecting these vendors is we go for the lowest bidder and responsible bidder. I understand your concern, and they, they are not the first and only contractors we deal with like this that seems to be the lowest bidder or responsible bidder combined, and we have to deal with that. If you want me to go to the highest bidder, well, I will do that. To go for the highest bidder, that's what you want, but the rule says we have to go for the lowest responsible bidder. Unless the coming which we have in the past have lowest responsible, but they don't respond, they are not responsive to our bid and time was running now. We have to cancel it and go to the next highest bidder. But right now, we don't have no issue as far as that concern. So, I still have to go to that, because if I go to the highest bidder, the council probably question me, why are you going to the highest bidder when we have the lowest, lowest responsible? For me to give a reason for that.
Now, the council, or at least this councilwoman, is concerned that you are shutting out all the other, uh, competitors. When you're giving the business to the same contractor over again, that should throw up a red flag with you, Mr. Onatary. To the point where you have become, uh, very familiar with the, uh, contractor, and they know what to bid. And since they know they're gonna get the contract year after year after year. And that's what the concern is here, at least from my perspective. Cause I, I mean, it's just no way, sir. You know, with all due respect, that, uh, 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 Zampa Rely, AKA Rippey Concrete in Hamilton Township, same address, you know, uh, you know, um, gets a contract every year. Uh, you should, you should really, uh, uh, examine all your other bidders that came in, you know, fairly and competitively. And I can bet you that, as Ms., uh, our, our Vice President Paula Wilson mentioned, that, yeah, they were low, but then there's a possibility that they played, they're gaming the system, and they're gonna come up high, and they potentially will outrate the, the, the other bidders that came in at a, at a fair market rate and didn't undercut the market just to get the contract. And you, being the manager or director, allow that to happen, or you're turning a blind eye to it. You understand someone who bids low in order to just to get the contract and then raise it. Look at the price, look at the value of the contract here, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So, I agree with, uh, Vice President Paula Wilson. I mean, they can't come in with a change. If that's their low bid, then it has to stay that way.
And I agree with you.
So, you should be monitoring that, sir.
Yes, I agree with you, and I had that discussion, and especially coming before you for any changes is scary. So, definitely I make sure that whatever get the contract, and that's what it is, because I don't wanna come before you and tell you to change, make a change order. I've had enough of coming before you for that, and I told all the contractors, and not the only one, including my staff, my engineer. Don't come to me for change order, because I am not going before the council. The only way I would go before the council for change order is something that is just, there's no way we can figure it out, and I can explain that. But in this case, of course, I already let him know, let the contractors know, and my staff, we're not doing no change order.
Yeah, well, you know, and let's, and let's Zampa Rely know and let all your other bidders know. You wanna send a message to, uh, the businesses in the city of Trenton, the local contractors, that, that city of Trenton, you know, we, we operate fairly, um, and competitively. And everybody, you know, welcome to do business with us, but if we continue to block other ven- ven- vendors out of the market, we're gonna get Zampa Rely every year, year after year. You, you understand that, Mr. Uh, Uh, Onatary? Do you understand the, the bias that's, uh, embedded in your selection process? Potentially a bias toward familiarity, that you're familiar with Zampa Rely, Zampa Rely is familiar with you, and every year, you guys give them the contract. And that's not, except, actually, that's a law.
Councilwoman, I don't have no preference or know this Zampa Rely. I do not. What happened is that it goes through the process, it goes through the manager of each division, and the final product comes to me, I review it. I don't know who Zampa Rely is, I don't know who Diamond is, I don't know what, uh, the other contractors are individually. I see the documents, but I don't know who these people are. So, the situation that we know them, no, I don't know any of these people.
Well, of course you know them. You go out on the job sites, don't you?
Uh, yes, it doesn't mean that I, they are the people that took the job. Those are their contractors. Those are the people working on the job, not the guy that got the contract himself.
Yeah, yeah.
I do have a motion on the floor to suspend the rule. Uh, I've, I've a motion on the floor to suspend the rule by Ms. Paula Wilson. This is actually, there's not two-thirds of the full membership. This is actually two-thirds of the members present required to override the rule. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. I will not call the roll. This is to suspend the rule and allow this motion to move to the floor. Uh, so, Mr. Blakely, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely votes yes to move this to the floor. Mr. Harrison, your vote?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison votes yes to move this to the floor. Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez, to suspend the vote and move this to the floor.
No.
Is that a, that's a no part, sir?
Uh, no, yes.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Vaughn, your vote to suspend the rule and move this to the floor?
No.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn votes no. And Ms. Paula Wilson, it's your motion to suspend the vote and move to the floor.
Yes.
Uh, let me just do something here. That is sixty percent. That is not enough to suspend the rule and move the motion to the floor. Sorry, two-thirds has to be, and I'm just, uh, Mr. Clogge, you wanna check my math here?
Yeah, no, you're exactly right.
I wanted to make sure I had sixty percent in my head. That was right. So, I'm sorry, uh, do we, that, Mr. Harrison, you can actually move that again. Uh, that is not one subject to, uh, being repeated, um, at a later date. Uh, Council Vice Chair?
Mr. Colin approves my point. If, Mr. Colin approves my point, when you have a director explaining to my colleagues.
Mr. Harrison, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Harrison, please. We need to move on from this.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have, uh, first reading and introduction of ordinances. Uh, this is, uh, this first ordinance is going to be set for October fifth, I'm sorry, October seventh. Uh, this is ordinance twenty-one dash. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Paula Wilson has a second on the introduction. Uh, the floor is open for any questions, comments, or would you like me to move the vote, ma'am?
You can move it.
Mr. Blakely for the introduction.
Yes.
Okay, let me just bring this up to the public's. Mr. Blakely votes yes for the introduction. Mr. Harrison?
Yes, yes.
Harrison votes yes. Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
So, order, the public hearing is set for October seventh, twenty-twenty at five-thirty PM. Make sure I have the date right. It is October seventh, and thank you very much. Uh, the resolution is introduced. It will be so advertised. Next, we have resolution twenty. Say again, sir?
Ordinance, sir.
Thank you. Ordinance, thank you. Um, next, we have resolution twenty-one dash oh twenty-two, an ordinance.
Ordinance, it's an ordinance.
Yes, I, I, I heard him. Uh, next, we have, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I did it again. Next, we have ordinance twenty-one dash oh twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map to sixty-nine and sixty-nine half Bond Street, Block eighty-four oh three, uh, sixty-five and sixty-six pursuant to NJSA forty, call, forty cap eight, colon, twelve dash thirteen, B five to Manna International Corporation for the sum nine thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Sum of?
I have a motion by Ms. Paula Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Vaughn. The floor is open.
Uh, I have a point of clarification.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Okay, uh, in three places it says nine thousand, but in the, uh, number one, in the last page, or, it's an ordinance, it says, uh, the price of nine million dollars. Nine thousand, the number one pursuant to NJSA, the second page of the, of the writing of the ordinance.
Uh, it actually, it's a typo that says ninety thousand, and if the administration, uh, this is from, uh.
Nine million there, nine, nine hundred and three and four figures.
Yeah, it's, it's actually ninety thousand, uh, but, uh, I'm sure, HED, we can, we can, that could be amended for a clerical error on the floor if that is indeed a clerical.
Just correct, just a correction on it. Make sure it's, it's nine thousand, not ninety or nine million, whatever.
Uh, and, and ma'am, do you want the HED director, uh, the acting director to confirm that, that it is nine thousand instead of ninety thousand?
Yes, yes, please.
That is clerical error. Mr. Mr. Daniels, that's clerical error. Is that a clerical error, sir?
Good evening. Um, to the best of my ability, well, to the best of my knowledge, it is a clerical error.
Okay, so madam, it's a clerical error. It doesn't really require amendment. It'll just be corrected before the, uh, the next meeting. Um, it is not a change in the price, cause everywhere else it says nine thousand, so it's pretty clear. Um, so, that being said, the sale price to be confirmed is nine thousand, not ninety thousand or nine million. Um, I have a motion by Ms. Paula Wilson, the second one is on the floor is otherwise open. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, pointing it out, by the way. That was very helpful. I'm sure I'll get a new, um, second page from HED, uh, tomorrow if possible.
I have nine thousand on mine.
Uh, the first, now therefore, it is ordained on number one at the very end. It's actually nine comma and then four zeros, point zero zero, so it's ninety thousand there. But the comma is actually after the nine, so it's just, it looks like it, just an extra zero is hidden. I do it all.
Yeah, I see where it's number one. Yeah, that's section one, yes.
Yeah, we were, okay, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Blakely, this is for the introduction.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
So, order, the public hearing will be October seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Next, and this will actually be the last item on the docket. Um, Ms. Vaughn has pulled her two ordinances, uh, for further consideration, and we'll get to the procedural on that, but, uh, for right now, this is, um, ordinance twenty-one dash oh twenty-three, and we're in some ending section two dash twenty-nine, redevelopment functions and two dash three four, division of planning, in Article seven, Department of Housing and Economic Development, in Chapter two, Administration of the Code of the City of Trenton. Do I have a motion?
Can we, uh, table this, please?
Yes, can we table this?
I have a motion table by Mr. Blakely.
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Paula Wilson. Uh, this is to table to the next meeting, sir?
Uh, yeah.
Um, question, uh, yes, for, um, uh, Vice President Paula Wilson?
Um, is there a recent interpretation, Mr. Collin?
Uh, let me just check, uh, lay on the table, there is no debate. So, I must move, I must, I must go to the vote, uh, the vote is. So, uh, this is the table, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely is the table. Mr. Harrison is table?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez is the table?
I don't know what reason, but, uh, no.
Mr. Rodriguez votes no to table. Ms. Vaughn to table?
No.
Ms. Vaughn votes no to table. Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Paula Wilson to table?
Yes.
Guys have a three to two to table with two members absent. This, uh, ordinance will be tabled to the next meeting. Uh, Ms. Vaughn, uh, this is resolution twenty-one dash oh twenty-four. Did you wanna move to table that, uh, at this time indefinitely?
Yes, yeah.
I motion by Ms. Vaughn to table, uh, this is twenty-one dash oh twenty-four, bond ordinance, uh.
That's just clarity. Bond ordinance, even if it fails, whatever, right, it's still, I mean, it's not a resolution, so the rules or procedure permits me to bring this back at any time, right?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're not, and we're not voting to, on, on the actual ordinance. You're, you, you were, you would ask for a motion to table upfront. Uh, so, this would be a motion to table, uh.
Yeah, I'll second.
Ms. Vaughn has a motion to table. Ms. Paula Wilson is the second. Uh, call the roll. Mr. Blakely to table?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Blakely votes table. Mr. Harrison to table?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison votes table. Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez to table?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn to table?
Yes.
Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Paula Wilson to table?
Yes.
Resolution is tabled indefinite, or, I'm sorry, the ordinance is tabled indefinitely to Ms. Vaughn, who should bring it back to the floor. Next, we have resolution twenty-one dash oh twenty-five. Ms. Vaughn, you would also indicate if you wish to table this at the top of the meeting.
Yep, so, so move.
I motion by Ms. Vaughn to table? Second, second by Ms. Paula Wilson. Mr. Blakely to table?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison to table?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle is absent. Mr. Rodriguez to table?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Vaughn to table?
Uh, yes.
And Council President McBride is absent. Ms. Paula Wilson to table?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion to table carried by five to zero with two members absent. Madam, that is the, uh, completion of the docket this evening. Uh, would you like to receive the, the, uh, public comment?
Yes, please do.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is public portion of the Trenton City Council meeting. You have ten minutes to speak your mind. We ask that you remain respectful, uh, and that you, um, this is a time to voice your opinion. There is no, uh, limit to the topics, and I will, uh, look for hands and, uh, then solicit the chair's, um, uh, permission for you to speak. Uh, once you are given permission to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Council Vice Chair, we have Ms. Colwell, well, I'm sorry, Ms. Council Vice Chair Colwell Wilson. We have Ms. Mary Horn, who is asking, uh, for permission to speak.
Hello?
Ms. Colwell, Ms. Horn is recognized.
I have Ms. Horn, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I just like to say, um, this has been a very interesting, uh, council meeting tonight. I very much enjoyed it. It, uh, flowed as we would like to have it flow, and, uh, so, uh, my first on, first on, of what I would like to speak in reference to is that I'm very grateful that we have ventured into, uh, going into resolving the MOU. That is so important to the city. It will move the city forward. It will give council what it needs to bring more money, as for more capital aid into the city without having some, without being, uh, restrained from it. So, uh, firstly, I would like to say, there was, uh, on Tuesday night, there was a question in reference to, uh, taxes. Why would we think that taxes would be raised again? And I'd just like to speak on my own, uh, fruition and, uh, my taxes. Uh, I believe taxes, my taxes were raised February, uh, twenty-one of this year, and I'm hoping I'm not the only one that they raised taxes on, but I have my paperwork in front of me. They were raised in, uh, 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 February, uh, twenty-one, and, uh, a reading from this bill, this estimated bill has the same status as a regular tax bill and may be paid without interest until eight twenty-twenty-one. And after eight twenty-twenty-one, interest is eight percent on the first fifteen hundred and eighteen percent after fifteen hundred. I did some math on, uh, the lowest tax rate. Let's say I took three thousand dollars, so it would be one hundred and twenty on the first fifteen hundred. I did some math on, uh, the lowest tax rate. Let's say I took $3,000, so it would be 120 on the first 1,500 in entrance, in interest. And then the, uh, the, over that 1,500, the next 1,500 will be assessed at 18%, which would add another, sorry, get my number here. Which would add another amount to, uh, interest rate, uh, would, would bring a total, I apologize for this. The first 8% would be $120, the next would be 270, total of 390 if we have not paid our taxes on or after 8/20, uh, 21. So that's, that's a heavy burden even with interest. So to me, that's an increase in our tax rate, right there. And with, notwithstanding, if you were, uh, your, your tax rate, if you're paying taxes of, in the amount of $8,000 and taking that 1,500 away from that and I assess it from 6,500, you know, you're paying 1,000. You would be over $1,000, 700, $1,700 that you would pay interest rate on. And I can't see, uh, not having raised taxes on that or to make that promise that taxes wouldn't be raised, even with standing, we've already had a tax rate in February. I, I would say, I, I have to disagree that taxes wouldn't be raised. There's no way we can get around it because our ratables are low. There's more, uh, rentals than there are homeowners in this city now. We would hope we could change that, but that's the way it is right now. So just to answer that question that was asked, I can't see taxes not being raised at this point right now. And, uh, number two, I'd like to just real quickly speak on the, uh, the cannabis ordinance. I, uh, I applaud council for passing that cannabis ordinance. I, I didn't understand it.
Uh, she can, she can speak on any topic. No, ma'am, you can speak on any topic tonight. You're free to go, Ms. Horn. You can speak on the cannabis ordinance. Please do.
Okay, thank you very much. I know I'm getting tired, but, uh-
Yeah, no, it's late. We, we go get a little-
Uh, I, I am tired. So, so the ordinance on the cannabis, thank you very much, council. And also to add, uh, from our Civic Association, we would like to commend Councilwoman Vaughn for, uh, inclusion of people have, who have been disenfranchised or affected, uh, by the laws and rules of the cannabis. Uh, black and brown people and inclusion for black and brown people, uh, veterans and disabled people, uh, uh, to be included when it comes to, uh, economic equity. We are very grateful for that. And also to add with that is that, and, and for giving us an explanation of the, uh, line, uh, that borders the, our schools and protect our children and that effect. So I thank you for the clarity on that. Uh, number three, uh, I also wanted to talk about that, that, that pipeline, that lot, water line that keeps breaking between, uh, you know, uh, Trenton and Ewing, but, uh, more on the Ewing side. Uh, that, 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 this has been several times that that pipe has broke and, and the taxpayers are responsible for it here in Trenton. And so I would say that at some point, Ewing would have to be, uh, take some accountability and be responsible for it and offset some of that off. I'm all, I, I agree with that. And, uh, there were, there was one more topic, but I, um, I, I guess that'll be it right now because I can't find my talking references. So, uh, as I say again, thank you, council, for a very good meeting tonight. I appreciate it and you all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Thank you, dear.
Council Vice Chair, next we have, uh, uh, D. Bonner?
Uh, thank you, sir. Yes, yeah.
Name and address for the record, you missed Bonner?
Uh, my name is D. Bonner.
Your general location?
I'm sorry, sir?
Uh, just your general location is good enough. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm in the train there. Uh, madam, uh, council, like, members of the council, I appreciate you, uh, giving me time tonight. My name is Steve Bonner. I am a, uh, longtime Trenton resident, uh, formerly and, uh, also former city employee as well.
I'm having a difficult time understanding you.
I'm, um, presently, I am the co-owner of Barstow Security Group of Red Bank, New Jersey. Uh, we provide services for the Asbury, Nepp, and Long Branch Housing Authority. I also am the proprietor of Surfixalite LLC, um, of Ewing, New Jersey, general contract firm, specialized in project management and all of that. We are currently in vital stages of achieving public contract certification and a veteran's administration-approved contractor. Presently working on, uh, a couple of contracts for, on both, uh, the security group and, uh, Surfixalite. A duly licensed by the state of New Jersey and good standing as well as being bonded and insured. Um, I have a bond which, in fact, a debt to the city of Trenton, um, which makes, and I'm not saying maybe, which brings me to the purpose of coming before you. That in our, our, or, as you may know it, the Neighborhood Redevelopment and Revitalization Program. The mission of the statement of the program, what makes me support the revitalization of the city, check. The redevelopment of abandoned properties, which some have been abandoned, um, but I'm thinking, since I'm at the same-
Mr. Bonner, Mr. Mi, Mr. Bonner, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Your connection is so bad, we cannot hear what you are saying.
Really? All right, hold on. How about now?
Much better, sir. Thank you.
Um, would you like for me to start over?
Uh, you have, uh, seven minutes, six minutes left, sir.
We are most-
First of all- Uh, no problem.
I'm sorry, sir. It's just, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, when you start speaking, it just, it, it drops off incredibly. I'm not sure why at the end. Yeah, it could be an IT connection. Well, you know, um, I apologize for that. Uh, we can try to continue, but, uh, it, they're not, well, I'm not hearing you and I don't believe the council is either.
Okay. I, um, I basically want to know, I believe in the spirit of the, uh, the program and, uh, but it seems to be right of mine. I've done my research, um, and it, it, it doesn't seem to be, uh, uh, workforce and, uh, the spirit which does, uh, design. So my question is, madam vice president, members of the council, um, how do I get involved? And which one of you would like to help me pay my debt back to the city of Trenton? That's it. That's all. God bless.
Mr. Bonner, if you, uh, if you email me, uh, your statement, I'd be happy to present it to the city council or you can email me at clerk, C-L-E-R-K, at trentonnj.org. Uh, I did not pick up on a lot of that and, um, I'm sure the council had some difficulty too. Uh, and I didn't even hear anything about a debt until the end, so if, please, if you email me, I will ensure that the council gets your concerns and your question. Okay, sir?
So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very much. It's clerk@trentonnj.org. Uh, does anybody else? Thank you. Does anybody else-
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else wish to be heard for the public portion of the Trenton City Council Meeting at 9:16:21? If you're on the phone, speak up.
Someone stands up, but they're muted.
Uh, it's, it's still D. Bonner, ma'am. That was, that was the last speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the second call. Does anyone wish to be heard for public portion of the Trenton City Council Meeting for 9:16? Do I have a motion to close public portion?
Some of-
I motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson to close public portion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Second by Ms. Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two more.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, public portion has been closed. Uh, Council Vice Chair, we are next to have civic comment.
Mr. Harrison?
Um, I would like to, uh, invite, um, everybody to, uh, next Tuesday, September 21st. NIA, the Neighborhood Improvement Association, they're having, uh, a meeting regarding the Bellevue-Rutherford Avenue redevelopment plan. It's at, uh, Prospect Village 110, Prospect Street. It's next Tuesday, 5:30 to 7:00 PM. Please come out and, uh, help be a part of moving the city forward. Uh, also, um, tonight, like I said, uh, we voted on some things, some things I, I agreed with, some I didn't, but at the end of the day, we got to keep people moving the city forward. Um, and, um, that's it. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everybody.
Co, Councilman, can you send that information to Mr. Conlon regarding the, um, meeting, that he can give it to the council people?
It, it was in everybody's box.
Yeah, I'll email it out.
It's in the council member's box.
I'll email it out again and I'll ask Mr. Harris, uh, if, uh, if he can do, uh, a blast if he want to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
If you send it to me tomorrow, Mr. Harrison, I'll take care of that. I appreciate it.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No, uh, no comments.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, um, I just want to talk on a topic that's been in the media, um, uh, and I won't be speaking on anything specific or about a specific individual or persons or entity or organization. But it's something that's near and dear to my heart as a black woman and African Ameri, a black African-American woman. Um, we have, we had a lot of, uh, news, negative news around our, around our city government and particularly our workplace. Um, so, uh, and across our country, we had plenty of movements around the Me Too movement, the Time, Time's Up movement, where issues of harassment in the workplace, bullying in the workplace, um, whistleblowing in the workplace, right? Uh, anti-discrimination in the workplace, uh, anti-retaliation in the workplace. So I would expect every lawyer, every director, every employee in the city of Trenton to look at our city code, uh, talk to human resources about these laws. Those laws are very serious and it could lead up to your termination if you are not compliant with those laws. You cannot, and particularly if you are a manager, a director, an executive, you cannot harass any employee that raises a concern about whether or not you believe them or not. If they raise it and they, and they took it to a, a human resource office or they even raise it to you, their manager, their boss or supervisor, that they're being discrimi, they feel that they, that they're being discriminated against for any reason. Whether it's their sexual preference, whether it's their, uh, sexual status, whether it's their, the color of their skin, or whatever. You have to escalate that issue. You have to report it and you have to document it and then you have to protect them. So they are under the New Jersey SEPA Act, the Consciousness Employee Act. If someone raises a concern, you need to take it seriously and report it and, uh, because there's some legal ramifications to it. You risk, uh, uh, there's legal risk for the city, there's liability risk for the city. And we just don't have the time and the money to address all these issues, if only if, uh, employees abide by those laws. Now, if any employee comes up and says that they have been, they feel they've been retaliated against, a certain individual have been harassing them, then you can be fired per the New Jersey Consciousness Employ, Employee Protection Act, which is called SEPA. SEPA is a broad New Jersey whistleblower act and essentially it protects employees from retaliation such as being fired, being demoted, being passed up for a promotion or harassed just because they objected to something that they reasonably believed violated the law or reasonably something happened to them negatively, or they are being discriminated against, harassed or bullied. It can happen to any of us. So it could be me today, it could be you tomorrow. So you need to respect these laws and let the authorities and let management take care of them and, and, and our law department, our human resources professionals to take care of them and let them, uh, investigate and, and let they, let the investigation ensues and take its course. It's not for you to do anything. It's not you, it's not for you to make fun of them. It's not you to voice your opinion because you don't know the facts. So again, I, as a council member, if I, any employee comes to me saying that other employees are stepping out of line and, and their managers are stepping out of line and are harassing them in any way, then I will make sure that you lose your job and get fired. Because under the retaliation policy in the SEPA Act, that's what the ultimate penalty is. You can get fined too. But the ultimate penalty is you will be fired. So everybody in this city, anybody on this call, if you are a director who, who receive a vice consent, you have employees working for you who have what concerns to you, they are protected under that act. You should look up the act, look up the ordinances in our city and read it before you act. So think before you act. So that's all I have to say tonight, uh, uh, about that. But I'm telling, I'm just putting everybody on black. I am a straight shooter and I'm not afraid to drop names. I'm sitting in a very privileged and powerful seat. And I will make sure if I hear any inkling of anybody harassing anybody who raised a concern about discrimination, about harassment, about being bullied, being bullied, I will ensure that you get fired. And, uh, thank you, uh, Vice President Caldwell-Wilson. I will not, uh, I don't have any more, I will yield my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I just, I just want to think, I just want to thank, um, the, the directors and our attorneys, Mr. Conlon and my colleagues. But most of all, I want to thank the public who participated in the meeting tonight and I just wish you a safe night home. And we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion to adjourn by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson. I think that is a second, Mr. Blakely. Uh, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, uh, we are adjourned at 9:42 PM. I also just wanted to reach out to another state capital, uh, Charleston, West Virginia lost the, uh, councilman last night, Mr. John Kennedy Bailey. Uh, he was a good man. I knew him, uh, and they are a, uh, state capital city council as well. So anybody can give a prayer to John. I appreciate that. Everybody have a good night. Please do get home safely.
My condolences, Mr. Conlon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.